The Royal Commission into Violence, Abuse, Neglect and Exploitation of People with Disability is now in session.
Good morning, everyone. Today's hearing follows Public Hearing 20, which was held over six days from the 7th to the 14th of December 2021. That six-day hearing examined in particular two case studies involving a registered service provider like Life Without Barriers. The purpose of today's hearing is to receive oral submissions from council assisting the Royal Commission and from any of the parties given leave to appear at the public hearing who wish to supplement the written submissions they have filed in reply to council assisting submissions. I'm joined today by Commissioner Alistair McEwan AM in the Sydney hearing room and by Commissioner Rhonda Galblay, Commissioner AC. Commissioner Galblay is joining the hearing from Melbourne. I begin with an acknowledgement of country. We wish to acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Eora nation, the traditional custodians of the land upon which Commissioner McEwan and I are sitting at this hearing. And we pay our respects to their elders past, present and emerging. We also acknowledge the Wurundjeri people of the Kulin nation, upon whose lands Commissioner Galblay is participating in this hearing. We pay our respects to their elders past, present and emerging. We also pay our respects to all First Nations people who may be following this hearing on the live stream or otherwise. The two case studies, which were the subject of evidence at Public Hearing 20, principally related to two houses operated by Life Without Barriers. The first case study focused on the experiences of two residents at the Lismore House, to which we have given the pseudonyms of Sophie and Natalie. Sophie gave evidence herself and her parents, Michelle and Greg, also pseudonyms, gave evidence about Sophie's experiences. Natalie's mother, Jennifer, also a pseudonym, gave evidence in the form of a written statement, which was read at the hearing. The second case study concerned a group of residents living together in the Melbourne House, or a Melbourne House operated by Life Without Barriers. Specifically Rebecca, Robert, Amanda and Marco are the names we have given to those residents. The Royal Commission heard about the experiences of these residents from Robert's foster parent Paul via audio visual link and from Rebecca's mother Catherine via pre-recorded evidence. At the conclusion of the hearing, directions were made for council assisting the Royal Commission to file written submissions and for all parties who had been given leave to appear at the hearing to have the opportunity to file written submissions in reply. The directions stated that after receiving all written submissions and responses, the Royal Commission would hold a further short hearing for the purpose of receiving oral submissions. That is the hearing we are holding today, the 28th of April 2022. Council assisting the Royal Commission filed extensive written submissions on the 18th of March 2022. These total about 250 pages. Six parties have filed written submissions in response to council assisting submissions. Responses have been received on behalf of Sophie, Greg and Michelle, Paul, LWB manager two, as the relevant person was referred to, from Life Without Barriers and from the Australian Government. Life Without Barriers written submissions in particular are also very extensive, comprising about 140 pages. All written submissions are available on the Royal Commission's website. The Royal Commission so far has published commissioners' reports of a number of public hearings. As has been explained previously, we do not intend to publish a commissioners' report for each public hearing, although of course the evidence of all hearings will inform the final report of the Royal Commission. However, we do intend to publish in due course a commissioners' report for Public Hearing 20 and that report will contain findings and recommendations. In determining what findings and recommendations to make on the basis of the evidence presented at Public Hearing 20, we shall of course be taking into account the written and oral submissions of council assisting the Royal Commissions and of the parties who have been given leave to appear at the hearing. I shall now take appearances.
Chair, my name is Patrick Griffin SC. I appear along with Ben Fagley of Junior Council as council assisting the Royal Commission.
Thank you.
I can also mention.
Sorry, yes.
I've also mentioned the appearance of Miss Anne Healy of Council, who appeared for Michelle and Greg. Miss Healy is in London and the nature of the connection is such that she doesn't want to disrupt the inquiry by announcing her own appearance.
Thank you very much for that. Can I take the other appearances now, starting with the Commonwealth of Australia?
Commissioners, may please. The Royal Commission. My name is Morgan and I appear for the Australian Government.
Thank you, Miss Morgan. An appearance for the state of New South Wales.
If it pleases the Commission, my name is Gail Furness and I appear with Mr Glover for the state of New South Wales.
Yes, thank you, Miss Furness. The state of Victoria, is there an appearance?
Yes, there is, Commissioner. It is Rebecca Bedford from Mintalison for the state of Victoria.
Thank you, Miss Bedford. And do we have an appearance on behalf of Sophie?
Good morning, Commissioners. May please the Commission. My name is Miss Craig and I appear on behalf of the witness Sophie.
Thank you, Miss Craig. And is there an appearance on behalf of Paul?
Yes, good morning. If the Commission pleases, my name is Brennan and I appear for Paul.
Yes, thank you, Mr Brennan. Life Without Barriers.
Yes, if it pleases the Commission, my name is Callan. I appear with Miss Ellicott, instructed by Corps Chambers Westgarth for Life Without Barriers. Can I also indicate to the Commission that from Life Without Barriers in attendance, remotely watching all or a substantial part of this hearing, are a number of members of the Board of Life Without Barriers and the whole of the Life Without Barrier senior executive team, plus its general counsel.
Yes, thank you very much, Miss Callan. There is, I think, an appearance from Reading, is that right?
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. O'Brien for Reading.
Thank you very much, Mr O'Brien. And there may be an application later from the Office of the Public Advocate of Victoria, but we'll defer that just for the moment, I think. Yes, Mr Griffin.
Commissioners, can I indicate that of the written submissions received, they fall into various categories. Firstly, an invitation to the state of New South Wales, New South Wales ombudsman, and also to the state of Queensland elicited the response that they didn't wish to make any written submissions.
Thank you.
Written submissions where there was no request to make oral submissions were received from Sophie, Michelle and Greg, Paul, Worker or Manager Number Two and the Ariluan Centre. And written submissions with a desire to make oral submissions were received from the Australian Government, Life Without Barriers and the Public Advocate of Victoria. In respect to the Public Advocate of Victoria, on the 22nd of April, that office sought leave to file written submissions. You Chair determine they could appear today and seek leave to hand up those written submissions. If leave is granted, Miss Fritz, a solicitor from that office, will seek to make some short oral submissions based upon these written submissions. My understanding is that those written submissions have been provided to the other parties.
Mr Griffin, when would be a convenient time to deal with that application?
Chair, you can either deal with it now or it's proposed that the application will be made when I finish my oral submissions.
Yeah, well, I'm content with the latter. Of course, I will deal with it when you've completed your oral submissions. Thank you.
In addition, Life Without Barriers made an application on the 12th of April 2022 to reduce further evidence. On the 21st of April 2022, Chair, you accepted the tender of this evidence, which in short compass is a supplementary statement of Claire Robbs, the CEO of Life Without Barriers, dated the 12th of April 2022. The Life Without Barriers practice governance framework, which bears the number LWB0007.001.0220 and short biographies of two external members of Life Without Barriers Practice Governance Committee, which bears the reference numbers LWB.0016.003.001 for the first biography and 002 for the second. So that's the evidence as it currently stands before the Commissioners. Before I deal in any detail with the proposed findings to be made by the Commission, as you've indicated, Chair, Public Hearing 20 was a third of a series of public hearings examining systemic issues concerning the manner in which disability service providers can or should prevent and respond to violence towards and abuse, neglect and exploitation of people with disability. Two case studies were considered. They went under the general title of the Lismore Houses and the Melbourne House. The focus of the hearing was to look at the role and responsibility for preventing and responding to violence, abuse, neglect to residents in supportive accommodation. There were, as a result of the public hearing, some common themes which emerged. Firstly, the allegations of violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation experienced by residents living in LWB group homes at the hands of staff, other residents and persons external to those homes. Secondly, the adequacy of measures that LWB took to prevent such violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation. Thirdly, the adequacy of LWB's response to allegations of that nature. Fourthly, the role played by the National Disability Insurance Scheme Quality and Safeguards Commission in its uncovering or responding to allegations of others of possible violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of residents. And finally, the role played by the NDIA, which is the National Disability Insurance Agency, in allocating and funding and planning of supports and services to residents and how that may have contributed to their vulnerability to violence, abuse, neglect or exploitation. The submissions prepared by council assisting are both comprehensive and extensive. They adopt the following structure. After the introductory sections outlining some of the matters, I've briefly summarised. We then look in part two at a summary of the history and structure of Life Without Barriers. Part three addresses in some detail the events of the Lismore Houses, particularly in respect to Sophie and Natalie's experience. And we take a narrative overview before considering the issues presented by each case study and analysing the documentary evidence. Part four of council assisting submissions address the Melbourne House and again, we proceed by way of a narrative, the experiences of the residents of the house, before considering the particular issues presented in that case study by way of analysis of the evidence. Part five addresses general issues relating to Life Without Barriers, including the evidence provided by the CEO, Miss Claire Robbs. Part six provides detailed consideration of external bodies, including the NDIS Commission, the NDIA and the role of community visitors in respect to group homes. And finally, in part seven, council assisting outlines the recommendations and findings which we invite the Royal Commission to make on the basis of the evidence presented at the public hearing. We circulated to the parties a list of proposed findings, which has subsequently been amended. And as a result of discussions which have occurred right up till this morning, that document has been further amended and I propose to make it available to the parties during the course of the morning. But to assist those following the proceedings, can I just take the opportunity to go through the document which has been circulated and indicate some recent changes?
Can I just check with you, please? I have a document headed amended list of proposed findings and recommendations. Is that the most recent version?
As far as I'm aware, but.
And I assume.
I'm currently having an updated.
I assume my colleagues have the same document.
Yes. If one goes to those findings which have been proposed by council assisting and move to suggested finding number eight, I now understand that that finding is accepted in the amended form by Life Without Barriers. Can I indicate where there are.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Is it possible to bring these paragraphs up on the screen as you're referring to them? Or is that a little too difficult?
I'll check. Yes. I'm told potential.
Well, I suggest that you continue and if we're able to accommodate that request, no doubt the relevant paragraph will appear on the screen. You go ahead, please.
Can I indicate that proposed finding eight is accepted by Life Without Barriers? And can I indicate subject to anything that Miss Callan has to say? But I understand that where amendments have been made, which have partly been suggested by Life Without Barriers, if council assisting has agreed to those amendments, it follows that they then accept that finding. The next one I wish to go to is proposed finding 13, which comes under heading notification of sexual assault to the board. With the exception of the word systematic being altered to systemic, that finding is accepted by Life Without Barriers.
So that requires systemic to be substituted for systematic on the version that we have.
That's good.
Thank you.
In respect to proposed finding 15, that is accepted by Life Without Barriers in the amended form.
Yes.
I can take you over to proposed finding 50. Council assisting seeks to amend the last line of that proposed finding to insert the word some before the words.
Just give us a moment because I think the team is doing a heroic job in bringing up the paragraph. So if we can bring up paragraph 50, then people following will be able to see what finding 50 says. Well, if we're having a difficulty, Pepsi might just read out the finding.
The finding says LWB House Staff, Disability Support Coordinators, Team Stroke Practice Leaders and Program Managers for the Melbourne House were aware of resident-to-resident violence and conflict in the house between 2013 and 2020. And it was having adverse effects on residents and, insert the word, some LWB staff in the house. And in that formulation, LWB accepts that finding. In respect to, you'll note that that is consistent with proposed order 49, which refers to some LWB staff.
Yes.
In respect to proposed order 52, which states LWB failed to communicate to residents' families in a consistently and a timely fashion that incidents of resident-to-resident violence had happened in the house. The word consistently is replaced by the word consistent and is then accepted by LWB. Proposed finding 55, dealing with staffing at the house, reads, "On some occasions, there were not enough staff to adequately support and supervise residents in the house and on those occasions, this had an adverse effect on the residents." That proposed finding is now accepted by LWB. I can take you to proposed finding 74, under the general heading fatal of LWB to take proactive approach. 74 reads, "Miss Robbs's views as of the date of giving evidence indicates that, if confronted with identical circumstances to those involving Sophie's case, she would not regard that as a matter that she would automatically refer to the board." That finding is now accepted by LWB. Proposed order 75, under the heading community visitors, reads, "It will be open to the Royal Commission to find that LWB failed without reasonable excuse to provide community visitors with the documentation required under section 130 subsection 1 subsection D of the Disability Act 2006 Victoria." That proposed finding is now accepted by LWB.
Do we have a list or can we deduce from the document we have which findings are substantially in dispute?
Such a document is currently being prepared, Chair. I hope to have it shortly.
Thank you.
The written submissions of the parties are in some cases, as you've mentioned, Chair, comprehensive. And I don't intend in these oral submissions to repeat in any detail what's said in those submissions. In particular, I acknowledge the fact that written submissions were made by Sophie and her parents, Michelle and Greg. And if I can simply observe that both of those submissions were notable for their plain English and for the heartfelt sentiments which are set out in them. And they both support in general terms the findings that we've proposed that you consider making. Paul's submission was also helpful, he being the foster parent of Robert. He's made some suggestions as to findings which we've elected not to adopt, not because we're critical of them, but because we don't think they're appropriate at this stage in this hearing. But we thank him for the time he's put into them. This written submission from Manager or Worker Two of Life Without Barriers is with respect, Chair and Commissioners, a submission which seeks from the Commission an exoneration of his conduct in respect to the case study. Council assisting is of a view that it's not appropriate for the Commission to proceed down that line if during the course of reaching your final view as about the proposed orders and in view of anything you wish to say in the final report about this public hearing. It's a matter for Commissioners at that stage as to whether they want to go down that path. But the primary function of this public hearing was not to conduct an in-depth investigation in relation to each and every staff member. And we're simply not in a position on the current evidence to be able to reach any firm conclusions about the.
Is it fair to say that none of the proposed findings specifically identify Worker Two and could be regarded as adverse to that work?
I think that is a fair summary, Chair. The submission from the Ariluan Centre is much more general in nature, if I might say so. It's helpful in setting out their point of view as to what a provider should do in certain circumstances. Once again, I invite Commissioners to read that and take it into account in your general consideration, but I don't wish to say more about it at this stage. Can I go to the question of the submissions of Life Without Barriers? Given the nature of the concessions or acceptance of the findings which I've outlined, it's unnecessary for me to go through in any detail the proposed findings that we urge upon you Commissioners and the response from Life Without Barriers. Their submission is an extensive one and sets out in some detail why they think a particular finding should or shouldn't be made, but in particular makes reference to what I might describe as the context in which certain things occurred. And I wish to make some general observations in respect to those submissions. The Commission heard from Miss Claire Robbs, the CEO, but we didn't hear from any board member. And so there is an absence of any evidence in some respects as to what the Board knew or thought or did at various times.
Was LWB, by my research as such, invited to nominate the witnesses they wish to present evidence at the hearing?
They were, Chair. Consequently, council assisting comes from this position, that in a large organisation, the primary person who sets the culture, the attitude and the standards of that organisation must be the CEO. That person is not solely responsible and indeed, a board will frequently play a significant role itself. But in the absence of particular evidence going to that issue, council assisting is working on the basis that Miss Robbs was the person in the organisation that set the culture, the attitude and the standards.
She also. That tends to be supported subject to what Miss Callan might say by LWB's written submissions, which emphasise a distinction between the responsibility of the CEO and the responsibility of the Board.
And particularly in respect to what information went to the Board, when it went to the Board and in what form. It's regrettable to have to submit, but council assisting's view is that the evidence of Miss Robbs was unsatisfactory in many respects. We deal with this in the written submission in some detail.
Could you give us the reference, please? Well, if not immediately, someone can find it.
Yes, boy, there. But I want to make some general observations. A person in her position has to have a keen insight into what the organisation is doing and how it does it. And needs to have a curiosity as to what's happening in their various facilities. And that can be achieved in a number of ways. In traditional line management of reporting up through the chain. But there is a real issue for any CEO to determine, how can you assure yourself that what you're being told, or more importantly, what you're not being told, is affecting the decision-making you engage in? When asked during the public hearing whether Miss Robbs had ever. When asked during the public hearing whether Ms Robbs had ever attended the Lismore Houses or the Melbourne House. She indicated as of December last year, she had not. She was asked questions about. How she sought to inform herself of what was happening in the organisation. To verify or confirm what she was being told up through the management chain. And her general approach was not one. Of spending much time on the ground, to use my expression. Certainly talking to other staff members at head office and talking to senior managers, yes. But very little evidence of actually talking to frontline workers or employees of the organisation. Their evidence in respect to what matters were reported to the board was also deficient. That was most prominent. When we were dealing with a case study involving Sophie. Indicate that in counsel assisting submissions, Ms Robbs is dealt with the pages, paragraphs. One ninety eight, two oh three, pages one ninety eight to two oh three, paragraphs six four eight to six five seven. If I can come back to Sophie's position. And seek to put in very simple language what the evidence says. Sophie had expressed a desire to have intimate relationships. Not an uncommon desire for a woman of her age and background. She was confronted with house rules, relationship rules. Which in effect prevented her having somebody. That she wanted to form a relationship, attend the house after six P M in the evening. When she agreed to meet somebody. She did so outside the house. With the disastrous consequences, Commissioners, you've heard about. Counselor assisting accepts that when the police became involved, Life Without Barriers had to take into account. The role of the police investigation. And ensure that they didn't do anything which would cut across that investigation or prejudiced it. But nonetheless, the support provided to Sophie after the event of the assault. Was deficient in many respects. Now, whether this occurred because frontline staff members at the house. Were told not to be involved for fear of compromising the actions of police or for some other reason. Or whether it's because they weren't sufficiently trained to deal with somebody in Sophie's position. The end result was she didn't receive the support one would have expected in that environment. During the public hearing, an issue was raised with Ms Robbs. About whether or not the events Sophie was subjected to were brought to the attention of the board. And the evidence was that they weren't. In a timely fashion. But of more significance was the line of questioning. If confronted with Sophie's scenario in December two thousand and twenty one. Would you do anything differently? And in broad terms, the answer was no. Yes, there was discussion about reporting lines and some changes. That answer was a very stark answer. Which revealed in our submission. A lack of understanding, empathy and insight. Into what should have happened. I note from Ms Cullen's comments this morning that members of the board. Are listening to these remarks. Only they can answer the question of whether they would want to know, but it's hard to believe. That a conscientious board member. Would not want to know. That a resident in one of their houses had been subjected. To the most serious sexual assault. The line of argument advanced in part by Ms Robbs. Was that it wasn't from a legal point of view, the responsibility of Life Without Barriers. Because the events didn't occur on the premises where Sophie resided. Is with respect deeply disturbing. Those of us assisting you Commissioners. Are well aware of the legal considerations that apply in these circumstances. And no doubt lawyers advising Life Without Barriers are well aware of all the legal considerations. But where's the care, concern and empathy? Where's the board member that would put up their hand and say? One of our residents. Was grossly assaulted. But I wouldn't want to know that. The failure to inform the board in a meaningful fashion and in a timely fashion. Deprived the board of the opportunity, not only to look at the circumstances of what happened to Sophie. But also look more generally. At the organisation's other homes. See whether they wanted to put in place preventative measures. More precise policies. Better training. Better support for staff if they didn't have the training that was deemed necessary to deal with that sort of situation. So not only do we say this Ms Robbs made a grave error of judgment. In not reporting to the board. But as we stand here today. We can have no confidence in something of a similar nature arose again. That she would act in a way that we urge was really the only alternative open to that. By the time she gave evidence, Ms Robbs indicated that she had been following the proceedings in the previous four days. She had been provided with statements. She and her legal advisors knew the documentary material that we were going to consider during the hearing. The second area of concern which flows out of that. Is what role. Does reputational damage or harm to the organisation play in decision-making? Was it weighed up? That it was better to confine the reaction to what happened to Sophie? For corporate or other reasons? To what extent, when it was eventually made known to the board? Did the board consider these issues? The events may be historical. But they're contemporary in the nature of what happened. When one looks at that particular instance. It highlights, as far as counsel assisting is concerned. Reservations that this commission might have. About the capacity of Ms Robbs. To discharge the full range of her duties. And the capacity of the board to respond appropriately. Commissioners, let me make it perfectly clear. It is not the role of this Royal Commission. To determine whether Ms Robbs is the CEO of Life Without Barriers. That's a matter for the board. But I raise these matters today. To encourage the board. To look into the ramifications. Of what was uncovered in both the Lismore Houses and the Melbourne House. Another characteristic. With respect of the written submissions of Life Without Barriers. Is what old common lawyers used to call confess and avoid. That is, you acknowledge some deficiency, in this case, you acknowledge the finding can be made. But you then seek to explain it away. Now, I'm not saying that that happens in all instances by any stretch of imagination. And it is legitimate on occasions to respond by setting out the context in which something occurred. But when in setting out the context, it's not accompanied. By deep thought about what happened and why. Then it really looks like it's simply making a concession because you've got no alternative but to make it. Let me explain in a little more detail what I'm referring to. If you accept something happened and the organisation or the staff should have done better. Isn't it actually a method that you must understand why they didn't do better? Why staff members didn't do what you would expect them to do? Why management wasn't aware of something? You can take each individual finding and start asking those series of questions. And it was the hope of those assisting you. That the written submissions of Life Without Barriers would start exploring some of those questions. Yes, something happened which we can see shouldn't have happened. But we've thought about it. And we've come to certain views about why it happened. And we've come to views about how we might prevent or ameliate the chances of that happening in the future. Let me give you an analogy from another field. For many years in the medical field of all health professionals. There was a culture of not confronting. Mistakes or errors or poor judgment. Or dereliction of duty. Primarily because of the fear of the legal consequences. Don't put your hand up because that'll be treated as an admission and we'll get sued. That became somewhat intractable in the health area. Then a programme of what's called root cause analysis was introduced. Which in a nutshell said, if something happens, for example, in a hospital which shouldn't have happened. Let's get everybody concerned in a room. And get them to tell it exactly like it was. With no fear of consequence. Now, that sort of form of root cause analysis was protected legislatively by not being able to be used in any subsequent proceedings. But it opened up those institutions and developed a culture of acknowledging when things went wrong. In a major teaching hospital, for example, in any capital of Australia. Hundreds of thousands of decisions of a clinical nature are made every day. And the vast, vast majority of those decisions are sound, well-founded and appropriate. But when something goes wrong. An open organisation wants to know why. And once they work out some of the reasons why, what we can do about it. It's not apparent in the written submissions of Life Without Barriers. Evidence of this exercise being undertaken even in recent times. It might be that it has and we simply haven't been told about it. But it is significant. Because how do you learn? How do you improve? How do you protect? Those people that have been entrusted into your care? Which is ultimately why you exist in the first place, to provide the service and protect. The clients you have. In view of that line of submissions. I invite Commissioners to consider. At the conclusion of this hearing. Whether or not. They would invite Life Without Barriers. Perhaps in six months' time. To report to the Commission. Particularly from a board perspective. As what they've learnt from public hearing twenty. What they've done in relation to issues which have emerged. How they've reviewed policies or developed new policies. And the whole myriad of other matters, which you're in part alluded to in the submissions when they talk about recent developments. And they're to be congratulated for embarking upon some of those programmes. But we really don't know enough detail. Firstly, about the scope of those initiatives. But secondly, about what's the timetable? For implementing these things. It is good to have outside advice and expertise to come in and look at an organisation. But not if it's at the, the cost of the board and the senior management. Abdicating their ultimate responsibility. For how the organisation is run and how the clients are provided with services protected and treated. I raise that now because it is not part of the proposed findings as such. It's something, something that I raise, having considered in some detail the written submissions which have come in. And particularly in light of the fact of the board's participation today. And if Ms Cullen or the board are in a position. To give some response later today in respect to that proposal. It would be warmly accepted. If it's a situation that requires more thought on their part. Because of the late notice, I'd have no difficulty, that's subject to your views, Commissioners. We also, when looking at the Lismore Houses, dealt with the situation of Natalie. And that's reflected in a number of proposed findings. It raises some of the same issues I've referred to in respect to Sophie. It has to arise from a spirit of openness. Has to arise in circumstances where frontline workers. Are not only carefully selected and trained, but also supported. It wasn't clear from the evidence of Ms Robbs in a specific way. The extent to which that issue had been addressed. Does the organisation work on a reactive or a proactive approach? If one works in a reactive fashion, you simply wait for concerns or complaints to be raised. And then deal with them in whatever fashion you feel appropriate. But that assumes. That people with concerns will complain. That assumes that staff members will feel comfortable and confident raising with their managers. Issues that they feel should be addressed. It assumes that residents will have family members. who have the time, the expertise and the wherewithal to step forward and raise issues. All of that is important, but it can't be the end of the discussion. And what in council assisting submission was lacking, as a general comment from Miss Rob's evidence, was a proactive mindset. How does she and subsequently the board satisfy themselves that they're meeting the standards they wish to meet? Many of those listening to these proceedings would be aware of the general notion of an audit. There is a world of difference between having a process of auditing, be it financial or be it as to quality and standards, where everybody in advance knows that the person conducting the audit is going to attend and what they'll be looking for, as opposed to a situation where you simply get the knock on the door. Solicitors are required to keep trust against. The fear that resides in the minds of all solicitors is the trust account inspector simply turning up one day and saying, "Show me the book." In a case of a service provider, you're assumed to be well-intentioned. You're assumed to have a series of skills and resources. In some cases, many years of expertise. But how do you bridge the gap between those assumptions and the reality of your performance? Life Without Barriers is an organisation which has been around for over two decades. It's an organisation which started as a very small operation in regional New South Wales. And now has revenue in excess of $750 million annually. My recollection is it has surplus of approximately $50 million. That is a testament to the growth of the organisation and presumably a testament to a feeling that it does what it does well. But how do we know that? Is it simply growth for growth's sake? Is somebody in a management position have the skills and the acumen to be able to grow with the organisation? What does it take to manage a three-quarter of a billion dollar operation? These are all matters often with the board. But they're issues that impact upon the delivery of service. When we came and looked at the Melbourne House, there were a whole series of issues which arose, which was slightly different from dealing with the Lismore situation. In Lismore, we're dealing primarily with two particular individuals and the events which happened to them and trying to draw thematic conclusions from those. In Melbourne, we're dealing with some of the same issues, but different issues. And in particular, resident-to-resident violence and lines between staff and residents. It's accepted that in group houses where the residents have quite complex disabilities, that that is a difficult and complex situation to manage. But it shouldn't catch anyone by surprise. If you're going to have residents with those disabilities residing in the same location, you have to anticipate how you can meet those needs. And during the hearing, we dealt in some detail with the question of assessment of residents, compatibility between them in that process. And that's outlined in some of the proposed findings. But one of the responses from Life Without Barriers is, "Well, yes, there were 61 incidents of violence in the Melbourne House in a particular period of time." But the inference is that is intrinsic because of the nature of the house and the characteristic of the residents. There's also a suggestion of, "Where's the evidence?" But that is of concern. The first response of council assisting to that is, the information of doing a comparison between the Melbourne House and other houses conducted by Life Without Barriers with a similar mix of residents is entirely within the province of Life Without Barriers. If they want to assert that the events in the Melbourne House were not, to use my words, unusual when you took all those factors into account, show me the evidence. Show me where you've done a study of other houses, looking at that issue. Because in the absence of that, what you're saying is mere speculation. It's an assertion, it's not verified. I know that there is frequently resistance to the use of the word normalisation. But why shouldn't this commission seriously look at whether or not the level of violence in the Melbourne House was over a period of time normalised? It was inevitable. It was a characteristic that flowed from the nature of the residents and their disabilities. If you follow that line of argument to its logical conclusion, what are you saying to those residents? "I'll accept you into a house. I'll put you in a situation where there'll be violence. I'll put you in a situation of harm and risk." Where else would we accept that? In what other circumstances? As an aside, putting prisons to one side. Would we be sanguine about those circumstances? Why are we not simply exacerbating the discrimination that confronts many people with disability in their life generally? There is also a tenor through the submissions, in particular in Miss Rob's evidence, that we're well-intentioned and we're doing really good work. Council assisting accepts that. We don't seek to impugn the character of any individual at Life Without Barriers. We assume that they're doing the job to the best of their ability in the circumstances they find themselves in, until there's evidence to the contrary. They do work, especially on the frontline, which is often difficult. It's very challenging. It can be hard to leave at work when you clock off for the day. And we came across the evidence of individuals working for Life Without Barriers that had enormous concern for the particular residents they were dealing with. That's not in doubt. As I said, this is clear evidence to the contrary. But what's the organisation doing to support them? Why is the organisation saying to a frontline worker, "I'd like you to work at the Melbourne House and you should expect there will be a high level of violence which will occur"? Is prepared to stand up and accept that assumption? Why not acknowledge the complexity? Be transparent about it? And grapple with it? In the case of Victorian House, historically say to the department, "No, we want to have more say in who comes into our house. We're going to take more seriously the assessment of compatibility." As an anti-seeding question, we're going to ask ourselves, "Should this individual be in a group home?" And council assisting recognises that that raises all sorts of policy and other issues about the models of accommodation for people with disability. And it's recognised that there could be enormous pressure to find a place for somebody. But the public interest is not served by not confronting that issue. And if it be that different models of accommodation are required, if it be much more resources are required, higher staffing ratios, the employment of external experts or counsellors to come in and intervene in certain situations, make the case to the funders. Set out what the situation is, all the things you've done, how you've analysed the issues. And if at the end of the day you think you're not able to do what you think should be done, make the case to the funders. And on the other side of the equation, talk to the families. Potential residents will probably have a file because of previous interactions with the system or previous accommodation or previous assessments of their disabilities. Talk to the families. Convert it from a file to an organic situation. And dare I say, talk to the potential residents. This is their home. The points I'm raising are very strongly made by the families in this public hearing. They're made by Sophie's parents. They're made by Paul. One asked rhetorically, "What more could they have done?" And were they hampered by a lack of a receptive attitude? Or in the case of Sophie, were the parents, in effect, invited to come in and do some of the work of L W B? These are really fundamental questions, which we say flow from these case studies. And our assessment of Life Without Barriers' written response is deficient in many of these respects. And we wait with interest for their reply later today. If the assumptions or propositions I've been advancing are not well-founded, tell us why. If we've diminished the quality of what you've done, specify. If you have plans as a result of this public hearing to change and do better, give us details. And consider the invitation to report back to the commission in due course. Chair, I know the time.
Yes, well, it's convenient to take a break now. In that case, it is just after 11:05 Sydney time. If we resume 11:25, is that convenient? Yes, we'll adjourn until 11:25. Thank you.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Mr Berggruen.
Thank you, Chair. I want to take the commission to L W B's submissions about neglect, which appear at paragraphs 208 and onwards in their written submissions. I want to do so in the context of the evidence in relation to Natalie. L W B construes neglect very narrowly inter alia by pointing out the possible consequences to them of a finding of neglect. In our submission, this mistakes the purpose of the provision, which is to protect vulnerable people. We don't submit that record-keeping failures caused Natalie's bowel obstruction. But a finding of causality should not be required to establish a finding of neglect. In our view, it should be sufficient that the deficiency had the capacity to seriously jeopardise Natalie's health. We say that L W B response fails to take account of the cumulative effect of the failure to record the Mobi coal dosage over a period that was proximate to the bowel obstruction. They in turn submit that the evidence does not permit a finding that Mobi coal was not administered. The difficulty with that conclusion is because L W B did not recognise that this was potentially a case of neglect, we cannot now know whether Mobi coal was administered or not. The L W B staff should have identified that in circumstances where Natalie was admitted to hospital with a bowel obstruction and where critical records were not kept in the period prior to this admission, this was potentially a case of neglect. We say they should have at least performed sufficient investigations at the time to conclude that it was not neglect. If one goes to L W B's own document entitled Stop It Before It Starts, S I B I S, that's an initiative which is set out in a booklet which appears at l w b dot one double zero one dot triple zero one dot six double zero seven. Their own document adopts a very broad definition of what constitutes neglect, being, and I quote, "The failure to provide for a person's basic needs, including food, drink, shelter, clothing and medical needs," unquote.
There's more than a hint in L W B's submissions of neglect being somehow equivalent to negligence as defined and regulated by the Civil Liability Act, but I'm not sure that's in the territory we're in.
This so often happens, Chair, you preempt where I'm going.
Sorry.
We understand the legal definitions which are often applied here. But in this particular setting, L W B sets out in its own publication a much broader and, we would submit, a much more sensible approach. Under their definition in that booklet, surely Natalie's bowel impaction would have been caught and it would lead to a more broad definition of neglect. Chair, as you and the commission are aware, legislation is often interpreted in a very strict fashion by black letter lawyers. But as a general rule, when you're dealing with a part of human activity that is protective in nature, you should take a much more expansive view than what a black letter lawyer may take. And rather than seeing neglect in terms of negligence, it should be in terms that, quite rightly, is set out in their definition, "The failure to provide for the person's basic needs, including food, drink, shelter, clothing and medical needs." A much more realistic approach in our submission. But in our view, not reflected in the analysis in the not reflected in the analysis in the L W B submission on the question of what constitutes neglect.
One might have thought that a failure to keep medical records over a period of time in relation to a resident who is at risk of particular medical conditions, it should be regarded as neglect if it could increase the risk of that condition materialising. And presumably, the failure to keep critical records ordinarily must have some impact upon the risk of a condition materialising.
That's correct, Chair. Our approach is supported by the evidence given by Samantha Taylor, the acting N D I S commissioner, who gave evidence and in her view Natalie's bowel incident, that I quote, "might raise allegations of neglect", unquote. So clearly in the mind of Ms. Taylor, that's the territory we're looking at. So I'd like particularly Ms. Callan to respond to these propositions in respect to how L W B approaches the definition, the working definition of what constitutes neglect would be of great interest to you as commissioners as you're considering that. There's another aspect of Natalie's position which raises a thematic issue. In respect to findings twenty six and twenty seven, L W B's reply at paragraph one ninety three, by contending that the evidence insufficient to find that L W B staff failed to communicate to Jennifer, when it became clear that the personal care assurances could not be met in respect to Natalie. You might remember, commissioners, that the evidence was that Natalie did not want her personal care attended to by other than female staff. L W B points to notes of a voice message on the seventeenth December two thousand and fifteen and a conversation on the eighteenth of December two thousand and fifteen, where L W B said that there would always be at least one female on night shifts. Additional notes of the conversations of the seventeenth and the eighteenth do not alter the fact that after these conversations between August and December two thousand and fifteen, there was no further communication between L W B and the mother. And yet male staff members were continuing to perform personal care on Natalie, which was outlined in paragraph three oh six of our submissions. This is another example of where not only is there a lack of communication, as I referred to earlier, between L W B and family members, but this is a situation where the family member raised an issue, received an assurance, which one would normally be prepared to take to the bank, only to find that for various reasons it hadn't been met. That raises the fundamental issue of trust, that a relationship when a provider is taking over the care of a resident, there must be implicit trust between the provider and the resident, also between the provider and the family of the resident, who understandably have an ongoing concern to make sure that their family member is being well cared for. And it's simply not acceptable to give an assurance, breach that assurance and not inform the person to whom you gave the insurance they weren't complying with. So I raise those specific issues because there matters which I think there is still quite a distance between council assisting and the position adopted by L W B. Can I now go to the proposed findings in relation to the Australian Government's submissions? And I understand that the findings which are seventy six to eighty one can be brought up on screen to assist those. You'll see in the heading N D I S Commission before Proposed Finding Seventy Six, subject to any observations by Ms. Morgan on behalf of the Australian Government. It's my understanding that Proposed Finding Seventy Six is accepted on the basis that it's referred to as a finding as opposed to an adverse finding. And I can come back and discuss that. The same situation applies to Finding Seventy Seven. And I'll give people a moment to simply read that proposed finding. And then when we come to Proposed Finding Seventy Eight, you'll see in the initial proposal, it has five sub-paragraphs, Romans one to five. And the new finding which is proposed by council assisting is in similar terms with the exception that it deletes Romans five. I could indicate, commissioners, that we propose to have a document for you and the parties later, perhaps after lunch, which will set out what I'm now saying to assist you. In respect to Proposed Finding Seventy Nine, once again, it is accepted, subject to an amendment. So seventy nine, you'll see currently is in terms of Romans one to five. And the proposed new finding is in Romans one to six. Can I indicate that if you go to the original finding, which should be on the screen, I hope, shortly?
We've got seventy nine, one to four on screen at the moment. Now we have five and six as well.
The original Romans four was deleted. And then in the reformulation, you take the original five but delete the last four lines and is required by section twenty four two of the National Disability Insurance Scheme, brackets Incident Management and Reportable Incidents, bracket Rules, two thousand and eighteen Commonwealth. And that's replaced by a provision in the proposed finding in similar terms with that deletion taken into account.
So finding seventy nine four is retained but with the last sentence deleted. And there's a new seventy nine five which repeats some of the material previously in the last sentence of seventy nine four.
Yes, and I think that will be apparent when we produce the new document.
All right, thank you.
Then Proposed Finding Eighty has been agreed, subject to an amendment. And that is, when you look at eighty Romans two, you'll see that it says, "I hope the N D I S commission failed at the time to identify this part of the manifest June two thousand and twenty contained as an allegation of a reportable incident and also failed to request L W B to notify it", and the words accordingly, "so it could request and obtain relevant records", is deleted. And in the proposed reformulation of two, "after notify it" becomes "of that reportable incident".
That amendment, as I understand it, is consistent with the submission advanced on behalf of the Australian Government.
It is. The Australian Government's submission helpfully raised some technical issues. And as a matter of accuracy and fairness, these adjustments have been made. And then that leaves with Proposed Finding Eighty One. And that's agreed, subject to the amendment in the third line where it currently says, "had only initiated one inquiry", and it removes the word "only". Those findings raise an issue more broadly, which I touched on at the start, about being proactive. I did so in terms of L W B, but there's an ongoing issue with the national body about to what extent should it be proactive in relation to pursuing investigations or seeking further information? It's acknowledged that there are a very large number of incidents reported nationally. It may well be that that figure slightly confuses the problem because out of all those reports, there might be very few that require the sort of proactive approach that we would suggest. But that's a matter that no doubt will be worked through progressively by the commission when it looks at the role of N D I S and the role of the Quality Commission. It's a complex issue, except to make one very broad observation. If a regulator has a reputation for being reactive and not proactive, human nature suggests that some people will take advantage of that. The experience of most lawyers, I venture to suggest, is that once a regulator in any field of endeavour displays that it can take out the big stick and go to court if necessary, it usually has a very salutary effect on everyone else in that field. It's indicated by the A C C, by Fair Trading Departments, a number of other regulators. It's subject to an ongoing discussion in this commission as to what the role of the regulator is and what resources are available to them to be able to, in my words, initiate their own inquiries. Moving away from what I mentioned earlier, simply accepting what you're told by, in this case, the body. I don't wish to be heard any further on that issue. It's a general observation. But that's the state of the proposed findings in relation to the Australian Government. The commissioners, as I indicated at the start of this morning, I proposed to take a very broad and more universal view. Consequently, I don't intend to go to any of the other proposed findings. But with your leave, I will reserve the right to reply if something is raised that requires a reply. But if it stays, they're my obligations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Griffin. Is it convenient now to deal with the application from the Public Advocate of Victoria?
It is.
All right, we'll do that. Just give me one moment, please. Yes, I think, Ms. Fritz, that you've got an application to make.
Yes, and if it pleases the commission, I appear on behalf of the Public Advocate of Victoria, Dr. Colleen Pearce. As noted, the Public Advocate has prepared brief written submissions dated the twenty second of April of this year. With your leave, I seek to hand those up and rely on those written submissions today, which I noted directed substantially towards Proposed Finding Seventy Five, which Life Without Barriers has indicated they now accept.
That has the commendable attribute of brevity, Ms. Fritz.
Thank you.
There should be more of it. All right, well, let me inquire as to whether any of the parties, and in particular perhaps the Commonwealth, has any objection to what Ms. Fritz proposed. Oh, perhaps I should just check with you. Are you proposing to add anything to the written submissions?
No, I'm not.
All right, thank you. Does any party have any objection to the course proposed by Ms. Fritz, namely that she, on behalf of the Office of the Public Advocate of Victoria, be given leave to file the written submissions of which copies have been made available, but she does not wish to make all submissions in addition to that document? Yes?
There's no objection from the Australian Government. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I'll assume nobody else has any objection in that case, pausing for just a moment. In that case, Ms. Fritz, the written submissions on behalf of the Office of Public Advocate may be filed and therefore before the Royal Commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have you had any discussions as to who comes next, in particular L W B or the Australian Government?
Council has received a, what I might describe as cryptic message. And I wonder whether we might have a shorter adjournment because it suggested that I may have misstated the position in relation to the Australian Government. I'd like the opportunity to speak to their council before we proceed.
I'm happy to proceed if that, just to save time. I think I can address it orally quite quickly, Mr. Griffin.
Yeah, why don't we do that? And if there's something still to be resolved, that can be addressed perhaps over the luncheon adjournment.
Thank you.
Yes?
Thank you, Chair. Could I ask first for the amended proposed factual findings to be brought up on the screen? Because it might assist my very short submissions if I could just address those factual findings.
Yes, Ms. Morgan, now we'd better make sure that we're talking about the same document. You're referring to the document that's been brought up on the screen in the course of Mr. Griffin's submissions a few minutes ago.
Yes, thank you, Chair.
All right.
Thank you.
And if we could go to paragraph seventy six, which is at page twelve, I think. Thank you. Now, what Mr. Griffin submitted a moment ago is accurate in the sense that in relation to each of these amended proposed findings, the Australian Government acknowledges that the finding as a matter of fact that is being proposed is correct. The concern the Australian Government has expressed in its written submissions and which I reiterate is that the findings have, sitting behind them, a bit more nuance. And because we haven't been told what they may be deployed for in relation to future recommendations, we did want to make sure that our position is made clear in relation to each of these findings. So in relation, just taking the first one as an example, Finding Seventy Six, it is correct that at the time of public hearing twenty, the N D I S commission had not made the, had not commenced the monitoring. And that is because, as set out in detail in our written submissions, communications with L W B indicated that the process itself had, the pilot had only just commenced and monitoring would not actually be required and indeed is still not required at this point. So we accept that as a statement of fact, it is accurate. Our concern is whether a recommendation in the future may not take into account that in terms of a temporal requirement to monitor, that hadn't yet occurred.
When you use the word, when you use the word required, do you mean that a follow-up or monitoring was not required under the legislation? Or do you mean that in the light of what was known and conveyed to the N D I S commission, no response was required because it would have been unnecessary?
Both, Chair.
Why the latter?
Because the communication which is detailed in our written submissions indicated that indicated that L W B had, was commencing its pilot programme just prior to December twenty twenty-one. And as your, as Chair, you will recollect, the hearing was occurring in this matter prior to that date. So an attempt to monitor something that hadn't been rolled out nationally, so the pilot hadn't occurred, and the national programme was still six to nine months away. So in effect, there was nothing yet to properly monitor that would provide information that would assist the N D I S Commission.
Yes, I see. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And moving on then to paragraph proposed finding seventy-seven. As the Royal Commission is aware, quality audits are conducted according to the applicable N D I S rules and guidelines. The Royal Commission has received detailed evidence from the then N D I S Commissioner, Mr. Graham Head, A O, in relation to the auditing regime in public hearing thirteen. At present, the rules and guidelines do not require the N D I S Commission to provide that information to auditors, nor do they indicate what use auditors would make of that information for the purposes of any audit. Now, the N D I S Commission has provided that information on a case-by-case basis in midterm audits, taking into account the requirement of proportionality. Now, as the Royal Commission can imagine, and as Mr. Griffin just noted, the scope of complaints and reportable incidents is significant. And any recommendation that all complaints and reportable incidents be provided to auditors would require an examination and testing of the audit system, which is beyond the case study of this public hearing.
Proposed finding seventy-seven doesn't say that the N D I S Commission should conduct audits on all complaints. It talks about not, the N D I S Commission does not currently make available to quality orders on a systematic basis, information about complaints and reportable incidents relating to a registered N D I S provider that they are auditing. I suppose something may turn on what a systematic basis is intended to convey. But as I understand the point of the proposed finding, it is that although there may not be a legal obligation to do so in a particular case, there are circumstances in which, as the N D I S Commission itself recognises, where it would be appropriate to provide the auditors with the information in order to ensure or allow the auditor to do the job in the most comprehensive way possible. So systematic may refer to identifying criteria for determining when the N D I S Commission would do what it does as it accepts from time to time.
That may well be right, Chair. And if that, that is what is intended, that needs to be tested in the context of the entire auditing system that is currently in place. So we don't disagree with that. What we're concerned about is a recommendation that would come out of the examination of this particular incident, as opposed to the auditing regime more generally, which Mr. Head addressed in his material for public hearing thirteen.
What about a recommendation in the terms that I suggested? That is, that the N D I S Commission should formulate and publish criteria for determining the circumstances in which it will do what is suggested in proposed finding seventy-seven. That is, provide auditors with information about complaints and reportable incidents relating to a registered N D I S provider.
I thi, I think the, the general concern, Chair, would be that how that would interact with the current guidelines and rules and how they would coexist. A recommendation that it be considered in light of the current rules and guidelines would be one that would easily be adopted and considered. I obviously don't have instructions directly as to whether such a recommendation in the form, in the way formulated by the Chair would be, to the extent it's necessary for us to accept it, would be accepted. But I, I have some concern that it's being pronounced without the background of the detail that was in Mr. Head's material in public hearing thirteen.
All right, I follow that. Thank you very much.
Uh, if I could then move on to proposed finding seventy-nine. I note that sub-paragraph four, so seventy-eight, there was an amendment which we don't need to deal with. Seventy-nine, sub-paragraph four, I also don't need to deal with. But if I could ask the Commissioners to look at seventy-nine, sub-paragraph six. And this comes, it is reflected in part by Mr. Griffin's final comments in relation to the necessity for the, for a regulator to be proactive, not reactive. And this finding at sub-paragraph six is actually a good example of why there needs to be an examination of that very topic much more thoroughly. Now, if one looks at what is being sought in that finding, the finding refers to the N D I S Commission not itself conducting what is described as any subsequent checks of L W B's records. Now, what isn't in that finding is any engagement with what the N D I S Commission's current powers are to check the L W B records, to confirm what was being provided. The Commission may appreciate that those powers are contained in a separate piece of Commonwealth legislation called the Regulatory Powers Act. And that permits Commonwealth regulatory agencies to apply for an investigation warrant. So what the N D I S Commission would be concerned about is any failure to engage with what would be required for such a check. That would be to take advantage of or make application for a warrant. Now, in light of the volume of reportable incidents and the need that Mr. Griffin points to, to be proactive, not reactive, that would create, the N D I S Commission suggests, a very, um, sorry, that, that would, it would seem that the proposal would be pushing the N D I S Commission to use compulsory powers under the Regulatory Powers Act. And if we are to-
I suppose, sir, Ms. Callan, I suppose that that depends upon what the words "did not conduct any subsequent check" might mean. Subsequent check, that subsequent check might mean, please, L W B, produce some records so we can have a look at them.
Well, what occurred in this, so this is a good example, that examination, we, we could have that examination. And in this particular case, if we look at the facts of what happened, L W B made a mistake and themselves have identified that they did not provide something by mistake. So if we had called L W B and said, "Just making sure you've given us everything", they would have said, "Yes, we have", but that would have been a mistake. So in the circumstances of this case, what would have been necessary to check is for the N D I S Commission to exercise its compulsory powers. And the question we have for the Royal Commission is, if that's what is proposed, we should examine that more closely and for the Royal Commission to give it consideration as to whether that is, in fact, the recommendation that the Royal Commission would be proposing, that the N D I S Commission exercises those compulsory powers more often and what that would impose on the N D I S Commission, as well as other aspects of the state which come into play when we have to seek a warrant under the Regulatory Powers Act.
If we were looking at this particular case, no doubt we would want to have a look at whether there was anything at all that put the N D I S Commission on notice that something that should have been provided had not been.
Indeed.
Is it your submission that there's nothing to indicate that that was the case here?
Um, I think that's right. I think if you look at the factual background in this particular case study, yes, we would say that is exactly where the Royal Commission would end up because of the communications. And it, and it was a unique, as my understanding, in relation to the, the documents that were, that are being complained about are not documents when you looked at the suite of documents provided that were missing in the traditional sense.
All right, well, if Mr. Griffin has anything to the contrary to say on that, we will no doubt hear in reply. All right, thank you.
Um, moving on then to finding, proposed finding eighty, sub-paragraph three. So here, what the Commissioners will appreciate, that what the N D I S Commission accepted at public hearing twenty was that the allegations, when they were made, should have been recognised as a reportable incident. And the obligation to notify was enlivened when Natalie was hospitalised in March twenty twenty. Now, there is considerable detail in the acting N D I S Commissioner, Ms. Taylor's statement, as to what could have happened in relation to Jennifer's complaint if the N D I S Commission had used it to request L W B to notify a reportable incident. Ms. Taylor's evidence was about what the N D I S Commission should or could have done in twenty twenty. The language of the proposed finding in sub-paragraph three contains within it a direct criticism that as at the time of public hearing twenty, certain steps had still not been taken. This issue was not taken up with Ms. Taylor, and it would be a significant denial of procedural fairness for such a finding to be made. In particular, given that leading up to and during public hearing twenty, a detailed forensic examination was being conducted by the Royal Commission, including the consideration by senior representatives of L W B and the acting N D I S Commissioner, and their examination by Council assisting, to suggest now that the N D I S Commission should request L W B to notify the N D I S Commission of Jennifer's June twenty twenty complaint and to request L W B records would be of no clear utility, especially in relation to the best deployment of the N D I S Commission's resources. The submission, this submission is not about not acknowledging what should have been done in June twenty twenty. The issue is the futility now of making the requests nominated in the proposed finding.
And it would be futile because?
This Royal Commission has led to the detailed forensic examination of the underlying complaints. The documents have been well ventilated. Both L W B senior executives and the N D I S acting commissioner have engaged with the factual background of what occurred. The N D I S Commission has acknowledged what should have occurred. And to now turn around, using resources, to have L W B adopt processes that are meant to inform the N D I S Commission of the reportable incident when we are now well aware and have well examined the underlying factual, underlying factual matrix, we say, is not a positive use of the N D I S Commission's resources.
All right, thank you.
And finally then, Chair, in relation to proposed finding eighty-one. The Australian Government acknowledges that this is a correct statement, and there is one inquiry on foot, although as a matter of factual application of the rules, it's in fact two separate inquiries, but it is in effect one inquiry. More importantly though, Commissioners, to date, the Royal Commission has not put to any witness appearing for the N D I S Commission that any other possible inquiries should have been conducted. If this finding is to be used to base a recommendation as to the use of the inquiry powers, the Australian Government submits that it would require further inquiry by the Royal Commission, with which, of course, the N D I S Commission is happy and enthusiastic to participate in. They are the submissions of the Australian Government on the findings.
Thank you very much. I'll just inquire whether my colleagues have any questions they wish to put to you. First, Commissioner Galbraith.
No questions, thank you.
And Commissioner McKeown.
Uh, no, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callan, for your submissions. Uh, Ms. Morgan, I'm sorry. I misidentified you. My apologies. Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Thank you, Chair.
Yes, can we, are we now going to proceed with the submissions on behalf of L W B? Or are you proposing that we adjourn now or later?
It's firstly in the hands of Ms. Callan, but given the fact that there might be a reply and the Commissioners might have other questions at the end, it would be useful, it's about time, if she's ready to proceed.
Yes, all right. Thank you. So, Ms. Callan?
Yes, Commissioners, and I, I can commence now. There may be a point in time when I would ask for the Commission's indulgence to take the luncheon adjournment. There are certain matters that I need to take instructions on, which haven't yet come through.
Yes, you don't need to ask our indulgence. We'll be exceedingly keen, I'm sure, to take the luncheon adjournment at some stage.
Yes.
Please, so go ahead. I apologise for indirectly misidentifying you as well.
Oh, it's a compliment, Commissioner. Um, first, can I indicate to the Commission, and more generally at the outset, that L W B expresses and has expressed sincere regret and offers its apologies to the persons and their families who were affected by the instances of violence, abuse, breaches of policy, poor communication and other matters that have been considered during public hearing twenty. In my submission, and I will come in a moment to the suggestion advanced by Council assisting this morning that L W B has failed to demonstrate sufficient insight that viewed fairly L W B's position in terms of the evidence which has been placed before this Commission and the position it has taken as reflected in its submissions are emblematic of an acceptance by L W B of deficiencies which have occurred in the provision of its services for which L W B takes responsibility. Also a willingness to learn and a commitment to continuous improvement. As the Commissioners will have come to appreciate, and I understand will be dealt with in a supplementary document being prepared by Council assisting. Ultimately, there is very narrow terrain in terms of, I could describe this dispute as between L W B and certain of the findings proposed by Council assisting. In its written submissions, at paragraph five, L W B set out a number of the proposed findings as articulated in Council assisting submissions which are accepted. Now, I'll come to it in a moment, but in my submission, that acceptance should be given full force and effect as an indication of L W B taking, having insight and taking responsibility in respect of those matters.
Which portion of L W B, Ms. Callan, is taking responsibility?
In, in my submission, Chair, it is not fair or appropriate to seek to somehow bifurcate the board of L W B from, for instance, its senior executive. L W B as an organisation has taken the position that it has in this commission. And i, in my submission, it is L W B's position.
Does that mean that it is both the board and the senior executive that should be regarded as taking full responsibility?
Yes.
What about the parts of the submission that seek to emphasise the division of responsibility between the board and the executive?
Uh, that, that is in relation to, can I put it, the distinction between operational matters and the specific aspects that fall within the province of the board concerning governance issues and overarching matters. um, and overarching matters of policy, um, and the like. That, that distinction in terms of role and responsibility ought not, and in my submission, does not um, by any means seek to, um, uh, adjust um, the position in terms of the overall responsibility the organisation takes as a whole that is comprised of, relevantly to your question, the, um, board and the senior executive.
Yes, thank you.
Um, as has been indicated by counsel assisting this morning, um, certain amendments to the findings that, uh, the proposed findings that P contends for has, um, uh, further narrowed, um, the terrain that I propose to cover today. Um, and in relation to a number of the, um, findings in their amended form, which LWB accepts. Um, the, um, balance, um, of the, um, findings which remain in dispute, uh, many of which I propose to rely on LWB's written submissions on those topics. And if I could indicate, this is my understanding as to what remains in dispute, findings eleven, fourteen, twenty six and twenty seven. And I rely on LWB's written submission on those topics.
Yes.
In respect of proposed finding thirty one, which is, concerns, um, Natalie's bowel care and the topic of, um, maintaining documents and neglect. Uh, that is the first of three topics that I do propose to address orally today. Also in dispute are proposed findings thirty eight, thirty nine, Roman two, forty and forty five. In relation to those topics, again, I rely on LWB's written submissions. The next, if I could describe it as category of proposed findings which are in dispute are numbers forty seven, forty eight, fifty three and fifty four. And these concern or relate to the resident-to-residence violence in the Melbourne House. And that is the second key topic I propose to address orally. LWB respectfully resists the current form of proposed findings fifty six through to sixty one. Those findings concern staffing levels and associated matters at the Melbourne House. And on those matters, I rely on the written submissions. Similarly, rely on LWB's written submissions in relation to disputed proposed finding sixty nine, Roman two and three, and seventy, Roman two. And finally, and this is the third topic I propose to address orally, for reasons that I'll expand upon, Life Without Barriers contends that the Commission ought not make proposed finding seventy two and seventy three, which concern, um, impressions of Miss Robb in the witness box and otherwise, and an overall impression as to whether she and LWB were more generally proactive or reactive in relation to deficiencies in the operations of LWB. Now, in dealing with that third topic, I will also address, to the extent I can, certain further submissions which remained orally this morning by counsel assisting. And, um, there is a particular matter that counsel assisting has sought, um, a response from and on which I'm, um, just finalising my instructions. The suggestion this morning in counsel assisting's oral submissions, that aspects of Life Without Barriers, um, written submissions had a flavour of, um, the, um, common law, um, concept of confess and avoid is, um, in my submission, not a, um, apt, um, way to characterise the written submissions of LWB and if there is been in any sense, um, a suggestion or an implication that that is what LWB is seeking to do, um, can I respectfully, um, resist, um, and, um, persuade you, Commissioners, that that is not what was intended by those written submissions. In acknowledging and accepting proposed findings and acknowledging deficiencies, LWB has not sought to explain them away. There have been, um, some instances where it was considered, um, appropriate and hopefully of assistance to the Commission to provide some further matters of detail and context. In doing so, can I make the point that the submission sought, to the extent possible, to avoid repeating detail that was already set out in the submissions of counsel assisting. The other, um, uh, uh, theme which was advanced by counsel assisting this morning was a, uh, hope that the submissions would, um, reflect, uh, LWB's, um, exploration of the issues that have been raised in this hearing. Um, identification by LWB of undertaking a process of inquiring why and how, how to prevent, how to ameliorate. In that respect, um, first, the submissions of LWB are, in my submission, appropriately and necessarily limited by the evidence that is before this commission. Um, I do not understand or regard it as appropriate for LWB's written submissions to go beyond the evidence which is before this commission, um, in terms of expanding, um, further or in other directions um, on, um, issues of prevention or amelioration. What the submissions do do, where the evidence is before this commission, um, and appropriately to do so, there has been an indication of, um, where processes or policies have been, um, improved in the intervening period. And the evidence before this commission, in my submission, um, from Mr. Dolly and Miss Robbs, sets out in comprehensive detail in response to the detailed questions that were asked, um, from the Commission, amongst other things, what were the events? Um, how did LWB respond to them? What has changed since then? Associated questions, for instance, in respect of, um, staff training and the like.
Ms. Callan, isn't it open to the Commission on the basis of the evidence that has been presented? And let me accept that we have to operate within the confines of evidence that has been presented at the hearing. But isn't it open to the Commission to ask, how could this have happened for so long? Why was it allowed to happen? What went wrong? And what did LWB, and in the way you've put it, LWB's board plus senior executive, what did they do to try and work out where things had gone so wrong? That, I think, is the basic point that Mr. Griffin's submissions are seeking to make, and it does seem to be a set of fairly obvious questions that arise from the large number of proposed findings that have been accepted, just leave for the moment those that are in dispute. Uh, and I'm not concerned about the number of findings. What I'm referring to is the nature and extent of the apparent deficiencies over such a long time at two different houses maintained by LWB. And the fundamental question is, how could this have occurred?
Yes, and Commissioner, it may be that there's been a misunderstanding or we're speaking at cross purposes. I, I understand and LWB recognises that that terrain is precisely the subject matter which this Royal Commission is charged to consider and examine. And that's been made very clear, um, in the, amongst other things, the way in which this public hearing was pursued. And, uh, the, my, my concern is that there is a, was a suggestion from counsel assisting this morning that LWB had failed to, um, demonstrate i- its own internal, um, reflection on these matters. And to the extent that that has been explored and in my submission explored in detail in the evidence, that evidence is before this commission, upon which it will and should make its findings. But if there are, so it's suggested, gaps in the evidence, um, the, the submissions of LWB could not have, and it would not have been appropriate to try to fill those gaps at that juncture. To the extent that there is a desire by the Commission to have Life Without Barriers, um, report in six months' time, um, which has been proposed by counsel assisting, I anticipate instructions, um, to the effect that that, that that certainly can and will be done.
Yes, all right, thank you.
And I deal, um, with what I described as the first of the topics, um, that I propose to address orally, which concerns proposed finding thirty one.
Yes, could we bring that up, please, on the screen, if that's possible? Yes, thank you.
Commissioners, in considering proposed finding thirty one, LWB recognises, and can I say at the outset, the importance of maintaining accurate and up-to-date records, such as in this instance specifically, um, bowel charts. It accepts recommendation seven, that LWB provide further information to the Commission in six months in respect of its process towards, or progress towards improving its record-keeping and incident reporting. And the other part of the background to proposed finding thirty one in my submission is LWB's acceptance of proposed findings twenty eight, twenty nine and thirty being failures by LWB associated with the maintenance of complete records. In terms of the position with proposed finding thirty one, I've addressed or we've addressed in written submissions the relevant statutory scheme, um, commencing at paragraph two hundred and ten of LWP's written submissions. To the extent that there is what might be described as a working definition of the concept of neglect in LWB's document, um, stop it before it starts. In my submission, that, um, is, uh, an act, working definition. It fits within what the NDIS, um, has published in its, um, guidance material as to what neglect is, to be understood as comprising. Your, um, Commissioners, you might recall that the term neglect was the subject of particular attention um, by, um, counsel assisting, Mr. Fogarty's questions of Ms. Taylor, who amongst other things indicated that she was satisfied that providers understood what neglect means. Here, and we make it clear in the submissions, but to respond to your, um, observation, um, Chair, um, in particular, LWB accepts that the failure to keep records, um, where that could impact, um, a medical condition in a material way, um, could, um, constitute neglect. The point that is however sought to be advanced, um, here in relation to LWB is that the facts of, that particularly emerged in March of twenty twenty do not fall within that term properly understood. In particular, can I take the Commissioners to one document, um, which we provided notice of that we, and hopefully it's available to the Commission? And that is exhibit twenty one eight nine nine. The, um, associated code for that document is LWB one zero five one zero zero one three zero 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 one.
That's a document that consists of a chart, essentially.
Yes, it's a spreadsheet, um, style document. And hope what you're honest will find, I appreciate the formatting is, um, not easy to follow, but in the, um, fourth column, just conscious of the pseudonyms which have been applied, there's a surname in that fourth column. Um, I'm concerned, um, that that not, if that's being displayed on the live stream, that that not undermine the position as to protecting identity conditions. Is it possible for the, you, you Commissioners to consider that document without it being displayed on the live stream?
We'll do our best. It might be removed. Won't be displayed. Oh, it's not being displayed to the general public, Ms. Callan, so.
I'm, I'm.
We, we, we can use that, so looking at the num, looking at the numbers at the left-hand side of the spreadsheet, which number shall we be looking across?
Um, the first, um, uh, aspect to draw to your attention, the letters across the top of the columns. Column E provides the date
Yes.
of a particular event. Column G describes, uh, the category of what is being reported. And then, column J sets out, that's the author, the author of the note which then appears in column K. And so, row two, the note which appears in that row is a note which was made contemporaneously on five March twenty twenty. And that was the date that Natalie was assisted to the GP. And the note goes on to provide contemporaneous evidence that the prescribed um, or recommended Mover Col and U R B were purchased. And then, um, at line four, still looking in that notes column, there's an indication as to the, um, author's observations of Natalie that day. And there's a reference to medication being administered. And in its context, in my submission, that should be understood as a reference to the Mover Col and U R B. The extra comment column immediately to the right contains in that note, still at row four, a further reference to medication being administered. And then.
So, what do, what do you say the evidence shows was the purpose of the medication being administered?
Um, well, there is a, um, amongst other things, an assertion, um, that the evidence doesn't um, indicate for this Commission's understanding whether the Mover Col was administered or uh, or taken by Natalie during this critical period of time. And in my submission, and I'll take. And in my submission, and I'll take commissioners just to one or two further entries here, this does provide contemporaneous evidence indicating first the extent to which L W B staff were alive to and monitoring Natalie's health, particularly in relation to her bowel issues, but also it provides some contemporaneous evidence that in fact medication was being administered. Now, that doesn't detract from the the point which is accepted in relation to proposed findings twenty eight to thirty, the specific charts which ought to have been maintained were not. But of course, a bar chart was maintained for the period one through to nine March twenty twenty, again during this critical period.
Miss Kelly, can I just make sure I've understood the way in which this is put? You are disputing proposed finding thirty one. Proposed finding thirty one is that L W B failed to treat the lead up to an hospitalisation of Natalie as a reportable incident that should have been reported to the N D I S commission. Your proposition, as I understand it, is that the failure of in the conceded failure of L W B to maintain proper records between the period one December two thousand and nineteen to twenty nine February two thousand and twenty, a period of three months, that that was not quote neglect unquote for the purposes of the relevant provisions and thus the obligation to report this as a reportable incident was not enlightened. Is that is that the point?
And I was seeking to take the commission to the particular evidence.
Yeah, now can I can I I just want to understand something. It is accepted by L W B that for three months up to a period, I think nine days before Natalie's admission to hospital, I think that was on the ninth of March, wasn't it?
Yes.
No, the medical records were not kept specifically bowel charts and that's accepted in paragraph two hundred and three of L W B's submissions. What does the evidence tell us about Natalie's state of health during that three-month period?
It's limited, but what the evidence, for instance, by reference to this spreadsheet document shows you commissioners is that certainly during this precise period of time, in the nine days, oh sorry, in the four or five days before her admission to hospital, that L W P workers were alive to and cons- and considered her health, particularly her bowel health, and acted upon it.
Miss Kelly, I I do understand that, but in order to make a judgment as to the significance of the failure to keep the medical records for a three-month period, presumably we would need to have some understanding of whether Natalie's state of health was such that the failure to keep records created a risk to her health. It wouldn't necessarily have to be in relation specifically to the bowel problem that emerged. I saw to my delight that I was actually quoted by the High Court the other day in a decision I gave as to how to identify a risk for the purposes of the Civil Liability Act. But here, we're not concerned, are we, about whether a three-month gap in keeping records was necessarily causally related to the hospital admission that occurred nine days after records were recommenced? We're concerned, aren't we, to determine whether the failure of L W B to keep the records during or to maintain the records during a period of three months created some sort of significant risk for a person in their care as far as her health was concerned? Now, I is it your proposition that Natalie was in perfectly good health for that three-month period? That nothing would have given rise to any suggestion that the the health records needed to be kept up to date?
I don't make that suggestion, Commissioner, and I'm grateful for the recognition that there is no, as I understand it, contemplation here, that there is a causal relationship between the absence of records and Natalie's admission to hospital. But where and building upon that position where neglect is amongst other things or a working definition to be understood is a failure to provide for a person's medical needs in in my submission where there is no suggested causal link between the failure to maintain the documents in this case and that Natalie's health deterioration which emerged and resulted in her hospitalisation on the ninth of March.
But why does there need to be a causal causal relationship in order to establish a case of neglect? In paragraph two hundred and fifteen, you cite the ordinary meaning of the word neglect and definition two A, lack of attention to what ought to be done, the fact of leaving something undone or unattended to. Well, that's exactly what happened here, isn't it?
It does in respect of the documents, Commissioner, but neglect ultimately, as understood in this context, is about a failure to provide for the person's medical needs. In in my submission, I'm not sure I can take the position very much further, but the in terms of attending to Natalie's medical needs, ultimately, the focus and the question is whether or how L W B's conduct contributed to the deterioration of her her condition.
I understand the submission that you say that unless there was a causal link between the failure to keep records and the condition for which Natalie was hospitalised on the ninth of March, there can't be a finding of neglect. What I'm putting to you is that a finding of neglect in this context does not require a causal relationship between the failure to do that which ought to have been done and the condition that ultimately affected the individual. Looking after somebody's needs, medical needs involves in a situation like this, one would have thought, keeping accurate medical records. It's just, it's I'm finding it a little difficult to see how this can't be neglect in this particular context. If we were looking at a different issue, namely whether the failure to keep records was the cause of Natalie's hospitalisation and bowel obstruction and thus gives rise to some kind of cause of action, there may be very different questions to be asked. But here we're just asking whether the care of was neglectful, committed neglect, if you like, by failing to keep records for a period of three months that directly related to the health of the person concerned. It's a bit difficult to see how that doesn't answer the description.
Not sure I can take it much further.
All right, okay, thank you.
Commissioner, the only other point I would wish to make on this point is that L W B has accepted, and this is in Mr Dolly's evidence, for the record, it's a transcript four seven eight, that L W B at the time and effectively immediately after Natalie's hospitalisation should have conducted an investigation to understand whether or not neglect had occurred in all the circumstances.
Do we now move on to proposed findings forty seven, forty eight, fifty three and fifty four?
Yes. Commissioners, in respect of proposed amended finding forty seven, L W B's primary position is for a finding in the alternate terms which are set out in its submissions. And I'll pull up a reference to that.
You deal with proposed findings forty seven to fifty four, paragraphs two hundred and eighty-two and following of your submission.
Two hundred and ninety four.
Two nine four. Yes.
All right, I'm going to have to come back to the reference, you know, oh, sorry, it's at paragraph three O one.
Three O one.
That is L W B's primary position, which is that the commission make a factual finding in terms of recorded incidents, the number of recorded incidents of resident-to-resident violence. But if contrary to that, the commission is minded to make a finding in the terms which have now been proposed in an amended form by Council assisting, then that is accepted. The
You you are accepting the finding that appears on the screen at the moment.
L W B seeks to persuade the commission to make a finding in the alternate form which appears at paragraph three hundred and one of its submissions for the reasons developed in its submissions that it is, the commission does not have evidence upon which to give the descriptor high frequency.
All right, so you're proposing in pet- to a finding in terms of paragraph three hundred and one in lieu of the finding that is on the screen.
Correct.
Right, I understand.
As to proposed finding forty eight, L W B has set out at paragraph three O three of its submissions a modified form of that finding, which can I submit does not seek to detract from the finding which is available on the evidence, but which but which does seek to employ what I might describe as more factual language to avoid characterising residents' behaviours of concern in terms which imply perpetration of violence. And that is a topic which is developed in L W B's written submissions in relation to the way in which it submits, the commission would, and L W B does approach instances of resident-to-resident violence amongst resi- amongst a group of people with complex behaviours of concern.
Yeah, so you're you're proposing a modification of the language in proposed finding forty eight.
Exactly. It's not directed at seeking to minimise the effect of the evidence, nor the behaviour or its impact, and nor is it seeking to minimise L W B's responsibilities in relation to that behaviour and its impact. But it suggests that the language that's set out at paragraph three O three is more mindful of the context in which that violence is occurring.
Yes, all right. Looking at the modification, I'm not sure it conveys anything that is in substance different to the original version, but I follow why you want to do it.
Yes, I'm grateful to the commission. The next and final matter to address orally in relation to this second topic is the suggestion in Council assisting submission, which was also addressed orally this morning, that there is a use, that there was a normalisation of violence in the Melbourne House. And that links up with some submissions I wanted to make in relation to proposed findings fifty three and fifty four, which both contain a word that L W B respectfully seeks to resist, and that is the word eliminate. That is the elimination of violence. And in addressing that topic, can I emphasise that L W B has and continues to accept it could have done more to reduce the incidence of resident-to-resident violence in the Melbourne House? But for reasons developed in L W B's written submissions, it doesn't accept that it or any other service provider could have eliminated violence from occurring in a supported independent living house.
Does that mean it shouldn't try?
No, that does not follow, and that I think may be the point that's perhaps with respect being misunderstood in this position that L W B has taken and Council assisting's response to which. That the other, aside from the word normalised, in Council assisting submissions this morning, he referred to an attitude of inevitability, and I think he even used the word sanguine. In that respect, I would respectfully resist such descriptors of L W B's attitude to seeking to minimise absolutely the instances of resident-to-resident violence. And in my submission, the evidence which is set out in L W B's submissions at paragraph three one five demonstrate that it was throughout the relevant time never taking a complacent attitude to resident-to-resident violence. It was endeavouring to confront the complexities of the situation that it was that that had developed in the Melbourne House. But but it is, as I've already indicated, accepted by L W B that what it what what was done was insufficient and that more could have been done.
When you look at the proposed finding fifty four, which is on the screen, the proposed finding says L W B didn't adequately train or support the house staff to work directly with residents to reduce or eliminate resident-to-resident violence conflict. It is a reference to training that would have as a goal, the reduction or elimination, if possible, resident-to-resident violence. The fact that it might be very difficult to eliminate altogether doesn't detract from the need to have training that has that has its goal. And no doubt, in some cases, there would be success. It may be that there are particular houses with people with similar disabilities where the policies and practices in place have worked exceedingly well and there is no resident-to-resident violence. I I think there may be a bit of semantic quibble going on here.
And I I I have sought to minimise that, Chair, this work of this commission is too important to descend into the to such semantic criticism. It's accepted that there may be not only policies and practice, but also, Commissioner, households where as as it happily transpires, the compatibility between the residents minimises instances or reduces instances of resident-to-resident violence. The topic of training, which is addressed at proposed finding fifty four, the alternate phrasing which is proposed by L W B recognises that the training and support which was provided to those house staff was not always effective in reducing such incidents. And that demonstrates and L W B has sought to put evidence before the commission of the focus which it it places on training. And in this context, that focus is very much through the prism of managing and dealing with behaviours of concern. That is, in in particular, very much an emphasis on going behind and beyond the impact of the behaviour which might be violent and addressing the nature of the behaviours of concern, the context in which it is occurring, all of which occurs in training staff in relation to their behaviour support plans. So the i- in my submission, the challenge and the in the form of the proposed findings by Council assisting at proposed finding fifty three and fifty four is that it carries the implication squarely that it is possible to implication squarely that it is possible to eliminate resident-to-resident violence. And for the reasons that are developed in LWB's written submissions, that is not, in my submission, an appropriate way of conceiving of such instances, given the context in which they occur. All of that being said, it is not to be understood as LWB normalising violence, nor that there is any lack of desire to minimise it wherever possible through a range of approaches, be they at the policy level, at the training level, and also having regard to matters amongst other things of resident compatibility.
Ms. Callan, I think you said you needed a lunch break in order, among other things, possibly to eat, to get some instructions. Would it be convenient to take that break now?
Yes, Commissioner.
And then we can return, you can complete your submissions and let us know what the position is on the matters that you wish to get instructions on. And we'll provide an opportunity, if my colleagues wish to ask questions, they can do that. And then there's an opportunity for Mr. Griffin to reply if he wishes to do so. So shall we take the adjournment now? And Mr. Griffin, should we take one hour and come back at 1:40? No, 1:50, I'm sorry.
Yes, Chair.
Yeah, all right, we'll come back at 1:50. Thank you, Ms. Callan.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. Is resumed.
Yes, Ms. Callan.
Thank you, Commissioners. Before, sorry, during council assisting's submissions, he extended what is described as an invitation to the Commissioners to consider whether they would invite Life Without Barriers to provide a report in perhaps six months' time. Can I indicate squarely that Life Without Barriers is certainly prepared to provide such a report? As I understand it, the goal is that a report be provided to the Commission. Council assisting referred particularly from the board's perspective, and in that sense, what I understand might be included is an indication is, for instance, the extent to which the board has been engaged with Public Hearing 20 and the issues that emerged therein.
Ms. Callan, I think all we need to know at this stage is that LWB is amenable to providing a report. I think then the next step would be for the Office of Solicitor assisting with the advice of council assisting the Royal Commission to indicate in writing what information we might seek and the mode in which that information could be addressed. It might be possible, for example, not just in relation to Life Without Barriers, but perhaps other service providers, for there to be a supplementary hearing of which some of these matters will be explored further. So I suggest that the best approach is for that to be formalised, and that, of course, will involve discussions, consultations with those instructing you, and they no doubt will get instructions from LWB on any proposals.
I understand, then that sounds eminently sensible, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
The one of the themes which seemed to emerge in my submission, particularly this morning, was the distinction, if there be one, between the board and the role of the senior executive of Life Without Barriers. And I've already addressed briefly before lunch on where the roles and responsibilities may differ, but where the overarching responsibility lies for the organisation. In my submission, the position with Life Without Barriers, as council assisting considered it ought be, is one where the culture, attitude and standards of that organisation fall within the province, not only of the chief executive, but also amongst other things with the board in alignment with their appropriate division of burden that is at the operational level and at the overarching level. But one concern which seems to be reflected in some of the comments that have been made by council assisting and some observations by yourself, Chair, caused me to suggest that, to the extent the Commission wishes to consider more directly the role of the board of an organisation such as this, that is a disability service provider, it may be, and Chair you may have this in mind, that that can be addressed via supplementary hearing or some type of roundtable forum, because some of the issues which seem to have emerged just effectively through the submission process suggest a desire to have clarity, but also perhaps for the Commission to provide some real guidance to these organisations about the best practice and the right approach that might be taken in relation to the responsibilities of these organisations.
Ms. Callan, as you'll be aware, the terms of reference for the Royal Commission require us to look at systemic issues. And one purpose of hearings such as this, which this particular hearing, of course, is concentrated upon Life Without Barriers, but there have been other hearings that have looked at the actions of other service providers or organisations. Part of our job is to determine how we extract systemic issues from the inquiries, investigations that we've held, and we have to make a judgement as to how they're best pursued between now and the date we have to report, which is the 29th of September 2023. So the short answer is, no doubt, we'll be in touch.
All right. Can I turn to squarely address submissions which were made in writing and orally this morning by council assisting in relation to the evidence of the Life Without Barriers CEO, Claire Robbs? The observation that was made by council assisting this morning was that it is not the role of the Royal Commission to determine whether Ms. Robbs is the CEO of Life Without Barriers, and I'm fortified to hear that that is clear. And with that in mind, I address criticisms which have been made by council assisting, which might otherwise be understood as entering into that terrain as to her suitability in the role. The submissions that were made this morning by council assisting, to some extent, interact with the written submissions which sit behind proposed finding 72. And LWB's written submissions go some way to outlining the reasons why we resist and submit respectfully. The Commission would not be persuaded to make that finding.
All right, just, sorry to interrupt, but if we could have proposed findings 72 to 74 brought up on the screen, that might help those who are following, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Callan.
And just for the Commissioners' assistance, this is, to the extent that it was dealt with in writing by council assisting, our response in writing commences at paragraph 384. In can I start with the following point? In my submission, full weight should be given to the sincere and, in my respectful submission, detailed apology which was delivered by Ms. Robbs in her evidence. And that apology ought not be understood by this Commission as in some way undermined by the manner in which Ms. Robbs sought to engage with the various issues upon which she was examined. And it's echoed in what I said at the outset of my oral submissions today, but Life Without Barriers stands by that apology and has sought, amongst other things, to reflect its position in that regard, in the position it's taken throughout this hearing, including in these closing submissions. In terms of the Commission's ultimate impression of Ms. Robbs emerging from her oral evidence, in my submission, it is not the case that the Commission would infer a reluctance to accept any significant deficiency in the operations or services of Life Without Barriers. But in my submission, her presentation in the witness box reflected, amongst other things, her desire not only to grapple with the deficiencies which have emerged plainly in this hearing, but also to do so whilst recognising what she regards as the extraordinary work done by Life Without Barriers for thousands of people each year. The other point I wish to make is that her evidence ought be assessed in the context of Mr. Dolly having given evidence the day before. And for instance, Ms. Robbs is in no way seeking to resolve from the concessions which have been made by, on behalf of the organisation. She, in my submission, made a number of further considered concessions throughout her evidence, and there's examples of those in our written submissions at paragraph 392. Just taking a step back, though, as the Commission will have gleaned, Ms. Robbs comes to her position as CEO against a background of considerable experience in the disability service industry. She commenced her career in frontline service delivery, and she has navigated this organisation over the last 11 years and, amongst other things, seen the growth that has occurred with this organisation, which has already been referred to by council assisting. And in my submission, he's quite right, and the Commission should regard the growth of the organisation as a testament to doing what it does well. Of course, recognising that, as has been exposed and considered during this public hearing, that there have been deficiencies, and some in a systematic sense, which need to be and are being addressed. But the suggestion, for instance, by council assisting this morning that sort of implied that there was a a lack of curiosity by Ms. Robb or a failure to have and maintain keen insight into what the organisation is doing is, with respect, not well founded, having regard to the evidence. A particular passage of her examination deals with this point. If I can refer the Commissioners, the part of the transcript on day six is that transcript page 502 to 503, but it's set out as well in LWB's written submissions at paragraph 407. I'm in the Commissioners' hands as to where they can more readily turn it up.
Yeah, one way or another, we'll have it, thank you.
Yes. In my submission, when Ms. Robbs was asked squarely whether she has a process in place that enables her to avoid the line of people reporting to her, and from time to time going to frontline staff, unfiltered by management, she responds squarely that she does, and she thinks it's important for all leaders to do so. She speaks about visiting various facilities run by LWB to talk to the staff, and describes that as one of the better parts of her job. Now, she was asked how often she does so, or what percentage of time, and she observes that she doesn't have a fixed sort of percentage. She then goes on to describe why she finds it most helpful to understand what's happening on the ground. In my submission, what she addresses squarely and reflects is exactly the desire for insight and the natural curiosity which council assisting spoke of as being so important for a CEO, particularly of an organisation such as this.
Ms. Callan, while we're on the transcript,
Yes.
could we go to page 494 of the transcript? But the relevant passage is extracted in council assisting's written submissions at paragraph 212.
Yes.
That's the passage in which it's put to Ms. Robbs that LWB had responsibility, at least in a significant moral sense, for what happened to Sophie. And Ms. Robbs declined to accept that proposition. And Mr. Griffin, you will see in the passage, indicated he was troubled by the answer. Is there some reason why we shouldn't be troubled by the answer?
In my submission, there's two preliminary points that needs to be made. The first is that what Ms. Robbs is responding to was the suggestion that the LWB was in part responsible, and as I understood it, she was, she sought to draw a distinction between responsible in the legal sense and responsible in the general moral sense. And in my respectful submitting, a fair reading of that exchange indicates that she was focused on responsibility in the legal sense and why that had implications for the nature of reporting which occurs to the board. But, for instance, further in this transcript at page 507.
Yes.
Ms. Robbs states squarely, and this, in my submission, is part of it, at about point 37, she states, "I don't think my evidence was that we had no responsibility for Sophie in any way. My recollection was that the questions were more granular than that. I think we always have a responsibility for doing our best to make sure people are safe." And that's where, in response to question asked by you, Chair, in terms of reconciling her evidence with the apology that was extended.
That answer is not exactly precisely responsive to the question I asked, I don't think. The question that was asked was, in effect, does Life Without Barriers have some responsibility for what happened to Sophie? And the answer is, well, in general, we try to do our best to make sure people are safe.
Yes, and that conveys, in my submission, a sense of responsibility. But where Ms. Robbs spoke about the questions being more granular, that, for instance, in my submission, indicates that the way that she was engaging with council assisting in those questions which appear at 494 was directed at the, if I can put it this way, more granular topic of board reporting and the distinction that she was drawing between the general sense of moral responsibility and the reporting that must occur specifically under the governance structures where legal responsibility has arisen.
Can you point to anything in the apology or elsewhere? By asking the question, I'm not suggesting it's not there. But can you point to anything in the apology or apologies that have been given or other material where Ms. Robbs accepts that there was moral responsibility on the part of LWB for what happened to Sophie?
Yes.
Now, I understand your submission about the answer given at page 507 of the transcript, but at the moment, I'm not sure that the answer amounts to a specific acceptance of moral responsibility in part. Not obviously, it wasn't the sole cause, but as you know, you can have a causal relationship between events where one doesn't have to be the sole cause of the other.
Yes, I'll pen up what I can in relation to that.
Or I would take, by all means, take that on notice, but I would be interested if you can point to anything like that.
Yes, whilst this topic and this transcript has been turned up, in my submission, the other and associated point which can conveniently be made is as to the top is as to the topic of reporting to the board. Now, I had rather understood by the amended form of proposed finding thirteen circulated by Council Assisting yesterday, which is in substance in the form suggested in the written submissions of LWB, that there was acceptance as to the rationale for that alternate form of the finding because of the points developed in LWB's written submissions concerning the distinction between the role and responsibility of the board as against senior executive and why in those circumstances the sexual assault of Sophie certainly should have been managed differently. And in that respect, starting with it being recorded in LWB's incident management system, then subsequent events occurring, including an internal investigation and escalation to senior management. The evidence before the commission, including in Miss Robb's statement of the twelfth of April, explains in terms which I understood accepted by Council Assisting, that the form and nature of reporting to the board is informed by the role and responsibilities of the board. Amongst other things, the board does want to know, in my submission, this is clear from the evidence, about serious incidents such as what occurred in relation to Sophie. And it is informed in that respect through the reports that are currently received in general in an aggregate style. Having regard to the particular focus of this commission on this topic, with Sophie's case study generating the focus. As conveyed in the statement of Miss Robbs of the twelfth of April, it is proposed that further independent expert consideration be given to the content and form of board reporting in order to ensure that the board is squarely grappling with the importance of it being kept appropriately informed and that that information can in due course guide the way in which LWB responds to deficiencies, but also develops its policies.
Ms Callan, at paragraph four hundred and seven of LWB's submissions, after listing a number of changes in procedures and initiatives, the first sentence says, as CEO of LWB, Miss Robbs bore ultimate executive responsibility for these initiatives. If that's right, why doesn't Miss Robb bear ultimate executive responsibility for the failures?
As an executive, yes.
As an executive, yes. All right.
The other point to address which emerged in Council Assisting's oral submissions this morning in relation to Miss Robb's evidence requires me to take you, commissioners, to page four nine three of the transcript. The, my note at least of the submission that was made from this morning was a concern expressed by Council Assisting that in Miss Robb's evidence, she was asked if she would have done or she would do things differently. This was in the context of the events surrounding the sexual assault of Sophie. And it suggested that Miss Robb's answer was no. Commissioners, at page four nine three, line twenty-five, Miss Robbs was asked by Council Assisting, with the benefit of hindsight, if those events were to occur in twenty twenty-one, would you take a different course in relation to the board? Now, what Miss Robbs answers, in my submission, does not convey any suggestion that things, that nothing would have been done differently. She makes it clear that she would have expected it to be an incident entered in the incident system. Then it would have been assessed by the National Safeguarding Unit and it would have been managed differently. In my submission, particularly in circumstances where Council Assisting has, as I understand it, accepted the position reflected in amended proposed finding thirteen, Miss Robbs ought not be in any sense criticised for the evidence that she gave in answer to that question. And just coming back to the question of the board's engagement with the issues which have emerged during this hearing, the commissioners would turn to page four nine five of Miss Robb's evidence. The top of the page, Mr Griffin, at line five asks her, have any of those board members expressed a view they would have liked to have known about it if it arose on their watch? And that's a reference to the events surrounding Sophie. Miss Robb's evidence refers to her conversation with the directors of the board, which she said have made us reflect on a number of things in the organisation, one being around the suitability of the reporting, the robustness of the systems. She describes that as considering it to be exactly the type of conversation you'd want a chief executive in a board to have around matters like this, when it's brought to our attention through processes like the Royal Commission. And in my submission, that speaks volumes as to, in fact, the extent to which the board has been engaged with the work of this Royal Commission, but also the open and direct dialogue between the chief executive and the board in relation to the matters that have emerged during public hearing twenty.
Ms Callan, you appreciate that one of these submissions made by Mr Griffin is that Miss Robbs was reluctant on occasions to make concessions. Can I direct your attention to transcript four nine six, commencing at line twenty-nine through to four nine seven, line thirty? This is the questioning relating to a concession by Mr Dolly that the rules relating to Sophie's intimate relationships as applied to her were inappropriate. And that passage, in effect, and I suppose I'm the one asking the questions, addresses whether Miss Robbs is accepting the concession made by Mr Dolly. And the question I want to put to you is, is it a fair reading of that passage that Miss Robbs was reluctant to make the concession that Mr Dolly very freely made?
The concession that was made by Mr Dolly includes the use of the term inappropriate. And in my submission, a fair reading of this portion of the transcript is that that is, it is the particular word in terms of that as the characterisation which Miss Robbs expressed difficulty with. And that, in my submission, must be seen in circumstances where it is accepted by Life Without Barriers that those rules did not sufficiently respect Sophie's dignity of risk and privacy and didn't sufficiently support her right to intimacy. The notion of appropriateness carries with it, in my submission, connotations which it's clear Miss Robbs had difficulty with, given the extent to which it appears, in my submission from the evidence, that the LWB staff were endeavouring to grapple with the issue. It's accepted that there is a balance that must be struck in an area which is not straightforward and that that was not struck.
When you read that passage as a whole, it seems tolerably clear that the reason Miss Robbs was cavilling the use of the word appropriate was that she had in her mind that everybody was trying to do the right thing.
Yes.
The problem with that is that, as I think was discussed this morning to some extent, you can attempt to do the right thing, but if you're not achieving what you're attempting to do, what you've done can still be and is inappropriate. And that's, that's the way Miss Robb seems to have approached it, that as long as it was done with good intent, then she has difficulty accepting the word inappropriate. Your own description of what LWB now accepts about that policy is a pretty good description of inappropriate, I would have thought.
In my submission, it's the very nature in which Miss Robbs understood that term appropriate to be that explains not only her evidence, but why this ought not be regarded as an example of her being reluctant to make concessions.
We may be on common ground. I think that may be the point.
But, 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 and can I say with respect, because Miss Robb effectively is revealing her thought processes to what she was understanding by the term appropriate, the reason that it may read as though she's resisting a concession is because she is seeking to emphasise that there was the right intention, albeit the execution was done poorly and with tragic consequences. But it's, it's with that in mind that in my submission, this isn't an example of her failing to make an appropriate concession when it's understood properly.
Yes.
She says squarely at page four nine seven, line twenty-nine and thirty, I would have liked us to be able to come up with a different way to manage the risk and Sophie's goals. Once again, I don't want to get stuck on semantics, but I think that the disconnect in the questions and her responses is perhaps one that is a semantic one and would not be regarded as her resistance to appropriate concessions. The, there's just one other matter that I wanted to address from this morning's submissions by Council Assisting that was made at a general level, which suggested, again, on this topic of reporting to the board, that the notion of, quote, reputational damage might have had some role to play. That concept comes as a surprise to me in circumstances where I don't understand there to be any evidence before this commission that that reputational damage was a consideration for LWB's executive or its board in terms of the way that it conducts its affairs and pertinently in terms of the subject matter of this public hearing. I am aware that that concept was explored by this commission in public hearing thirteen and that was a term that was found in some of the documents in the evidence in that public hearing. Can I suggest that the bottom line is there's no evidence to support an inference that that is a concern or it affected the way in which LWB has conducted itself in relation to these matters or more generally. And I would ask the commission not to take that any further. The final topic to address or the final aspect of the topic, the third topic to address, is proposed finding seventy-three.
Yes, that is up on the screen.
Yes, commissioners, the written submissions of Life Without Barriers from paragraph three ninety-seven onwards grapple with this proposed finding. Can I say plainly enough, and as you would expect, Life Without Barriers is concerned to respond directly when revelations emerge about substandard care and support, including to the extent it arises in the operations of LWB. That, that fact ought not more broadly give rise to a conclusion by this commission that the position of Miss Robbs, the CEO, or LWB more generally, is to sit back and take a reactive approach. For amongst other reasons, those outlined by Council Assisting, which gets to the real difficulties with an organisation taking such a reactive approach. In my submission, there is a body of evidence before this commission which demonstrates the proactive approach which is taken by the organisation. And that's dealt with in, at length, at paragraph four hundred and six of LWB's written submissions. It deals not only with the existence and implementation of, in my submission, what are comprehensive policies and procedures, also in relation to the training of staff, but further in relation to the way in which reports are provided to the board and the board's active interest in seeking to be properly informed.
Ms Callan, is this a submission as to what the position is now with LWB? Or what it was at all material times, or what it has been since two thousand and nineteen? What's the temporal aspect of this submission?
Well, in my submission, the finding is not expressed in temporal terms. That is finding seventy-three, other than it's expressed in the past tense that they did not take a proactive approach. We had sought to address it in its terms, which is to point to, over a period of time, examples that demonstrates proactivity. It's difficult, in my submission, to respond to a proposed finding which lacks that temporal dimensions.
I suppose there's a certain lack of precision in it, but pretty clearly it's intended, read in context, I would have thought, to refer to the events that have been the subject of evidence over a period of time. Rather than, as at, say, April 2022, or even December 2021. Many of the developments that are referred to at paragraph 406 are actually from 2021 on. Not all of them, but some of them are, many of them are, in fact. So if we, if we read, and Mr. Griffin no doubt can clarify this, if we read proposed finding 73 is intended to be related to the period in respect of which evidence was given about LWB's actions or inaction, then is that, is finding 73 justified on the evidence?
Can I correct, if there's any misapprehension, Chair, as to the timeframes that concern? Sorry, I'll start again. The broad assertion of a reactive rather than a proactive approach was understood to be referable to the period covered by the public hearing, which is a broad period from 2011 to 2020. The evidence which has been specifically pointed to as demonstrative of a proactive approach by the organization covers a period of time, at least from 2014 onwards. That was, if I can take the commission to paragraph, what's it, page 122 of Ms. Robb's statement of the 17th of November 2021?
Can we bring that up on the screen?
Yes. So, the bottom of page 122.
Yes, well, being a Luddite, I have a paper copy.
So do I. So do I. Ultimately feels more reliable. Chair, you might observe question 38, which is asked by the commission and in the preparation of this statement, seeks to have identified proactive strategies and adopted all steps taken by LWB to prevent the occurrence of resident-to-resident violence, abuse, and/or other conflict. This was specific to the Melbourne House over that period from 2014 to 2019. And in answer to that question, which I recognize was specific to the Melbourne House, but in my submission produced an answer which is more generally indicative of a proactive approach by the organization, Ms. Robb, from paragraph 346 onwards, addresses various steps taken to improve, and in my submission, proactively deal with monitoring, detecting, and/or rectifying deficiencies. So that deals at a documentary level, as she describes. For instance, at paragraph 350, as to the content and structure of policies, not only to reflect legislative standards and requirements, but also evolving views regarding best practice. Over the page, page 124 of her statement, she describes initiatives and improvements that are made in relation to access and training. And at paragraph 355, she sets out a number of enhancements to systems and processes for preventing recording and reporting to complaints. What might be observed is that the, it was from December 2017 that the eyesight system was implemented in terms of the recording of incidents, and it's been a theme throughout the evidence as to the significance of that system in triggering steps to be taken, including amongst other things, investigations into events. But she also refers to initiatives from just working through, I guess, bearing in mind the temporal question that you asked, Chair, September 2019, December 2019, November 2019, changes and initiatives. It is certainly recognized that the content of this statement reveals initiatives and proactive conduct by the organization, effectively from 2017 onwards. In my submission, that ought not be read or understood as indicating a lack of proactivity before that time. But where an organization is, and in my submission, it's demonstrated here, alive to the importance of maintaining best practice, scrutinizing and improving its processes. It's not surprising that the evidence that was collated in 2021 referred to this period of time in the three or four years there before. Because, of course, that in itself suggests the position as it's developed over the last three or four years, which, in my submission, it can be, or it being third, was an improvement upon systems that had been developed, in my submission, proactively at earlier points in time, but have, as can be seen here, been the subject of proactive attention. Hope that makes sense.
I think it makes sense. I'm not entirely sure it answers proposed finding 73, which refers not to the development of policies, but a proactive approach to the monitoring, directing, detecting, and/or rectifying the deficiencies in the operations. As one of the themes of the hearing, and that's been repeated by Mr. Griffin this morning, is that you can have the best policies in the world. They're not much help if they're not implemented and monitored very carefully. And I think, at least on my reading, that's what proposed finding 73 is directed.
Well, in that respect, can I particularly emphasize what's set out in Ms. Robb's statement at paragraph 355, page 124, which moves beyond that question of policy, and it recognized that their policies have a role, but the significance is their adherence. What's set out at 355, in my submission, squarely deals with the criticism in proposed finding 73, because it's about the systems and processes for preventing recording, reporting, and responding to complaints and incidents. Which, in my submission, the fact of a system to deal with incidents is not by its nature a reactive approach of an organization, particularly in circumstances where, as set out here, there are, for instance, described at paragraph C, that campaign with the name Stop It Before It Starts, which, in my submission, is a particularly good example of a proactive approach by the organization on this topic. But also the introduction of specific roles to strengthen the management of critical incidents and complaints through the Office of Special Counsel and the National Complaints Manager role. And over the page, amongst other things, the creation of the National Safeguarding Unit. In my submission, those reforms particularly provide the commission with evidence which would cause it to hesitate from making proposed finding 73, which is expressed in such broad, temporal terms, but also uses, in my submission, a loaded expression of a failure to take a proactive approach, where there is evidence before this commission to the contrary. Over at paragraph 356, Ms. Robb's details what the organization has done by way of initiatives to promote and support a rights-informed approach to service provision. And, for instance, at paragraph 359, page 132, Ms. Robb's squarely addresses what the board had done in the last 12 months. She describes it and focuses on to seek to ensure that there are in place key performance indicators and other measures, along with regular reporting to the board, so as to enable it to be well-informed. All of those matters, in my submission, are reflective of a proactive approach. Not only to monitoring, detecting, and rectifying deficiencies, but also to seek to minimize instances, amongst other things, of violence, neglect, and otherwise that might come about during LWB's operations. Including comments from me, and I recognize they may well be questions. In my submission, Life Without Barriers has an overarching focus and goal of changing lives to the better. And amongst other things, it recognizes the very important work which is being done by this Royal Commission, and it seeks to demonstrate real learning and real sense of responsibility, from which it does not shy away in terms of the events which have been the subject of focus in this hearing. And the organization, as I've indicated when we resumed after lunch, is certainly concerned to provide information and a report to the commission at whatever interval it considers would be most useful, to provide the commission with further information. And if it's the right term reassurance as to how squarely the organization is grappled with the matters that have emerged during this hearing.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Callan. I will ask my colleagues whether they have any questions. First, I'll ask Commissioner Gilberte whether she has any questions to put to you.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Callan, I would like to take you back to this morning just before lunch. When you said you respectfully resist the wording of finding 53 and 54 regarding the word eliminate in the context of elimination of resident-to-resident violence in supported independent living houses. Is that right? Yes. You went on to say that LWB doesn't accept that it or any other service provider could have eliminated violence from occurring in a supported independent living house. Is that correct?
Yes.
Are you suggesting, then, that resident-to-resident violence is inevitable in supported independent living houses? And if so, why?
Commissioner, inevitability carries with it a connotation which I did seek to resist, which was the suggestion that that somehow meant that it was normalized or acceptable. But the position of LWB in relation to resident-to-resident violence is that in circumstances where it emerges from behaviors of concern and the complexity which is almost necessarily occurs in a group home involving a number of residents in that supported environment, the the notion of it being eliminated suggests, in a way, that behaviors of concern will be eliminated. And the position of Life Without Barriers is that, plainly, that that's not the case, that there is a keen concern to provide support and to formulate and then adhere to behavior support plans to the best extent possible to manage behaviors of concern. But that's the, that's the reason for the resistance to the term.
And so you're saying that the behaviors of concern don't relate to the environment of the group home, of the supported independent living, that could accentuate the behaviors of concern?
We do accept that the environment of the group home may well affect the instance of behaviors of concern.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Gilberte. Commissioner?
No, no, thank you.
Thank you. In that case, thank you, Ms. Callan, for your submissions. Mr. Griffin, do you have anything in reply?
I don't, Chair.
Thank you very much. In that case, I would like to thank the parties that have provided written submissions to the Royal Commission arising out of this public hearing, and also to thank the council today who have presented oral submissions. We are grateful for the assistance that has been provided. As I indicated, we plan to produce a Commissioner's Report in due course, and that will involve taking into careful consideration the submissions that have been provided in writing and which have been supplemented orally today. I would also like to express the appreciation of the Commissions to all those who, again, have been involved in preparing the hearing that has been held today. It's difficult to appreciate from outside just how much goes into preparing a hearing, even if it's confined to the presentation of submissions, particularly with the constraints that are imposed by reason of the COVID-19 variants that create difficulties that are of quite unexpected kind. So we do express our appreciation to all of the staff and outside bodies that have been involved in preparation for and the conduct of this hearing. So thank you very much and we will now adjourn.
Before you do, Chair, I wonder if I might have the indulgence of you, Chair, and the commissioners, firstly to reiterate the thanks you've just expressed to various people, but it won't have gone unnoticed to people participating in this hearing, that I commenced this hearing with the assistance of Ben Fogarty and Belinda Baker as my junior counsel. Since the public hearing concluded in December, Belinda Baker has been appointed a Judge of the Supreme Court of the ACT and as a consequence, she has disappeared from the scene in terms of this hearing today. Can I take the opportunity to say that she has been a great asset to this commission and to me as senior counsel assisting? She's also been a great asset to the Office of the Director of Public Prosecutions in New South Wales and to the New South Wales Bar. She's played an enormously valuable role in this particular hearing and I just wanted to put on the record my thanks on behalf of everyone else for her work.
Thank you, Mr Griffin. Ms Baker is not entirely unknown to me. She was my associate when I was on the federal court and her progression to the ACT Supreme Court is entirely appropriate for the service and skills and dedication that she showed as an associate all those years ago. Well, in her case, it probably doesn't seem so long. In my case, it does. I have no doubt that Ms Baker will be an adornment to the bench in the ACT. Thank you very much.
The Royal Commission is adjourned.